June, can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Craig Borba?
Here.
Melissa Cronin is absent. Juanita Garner?
Here.
David Kelly?
Here.
Ed McBride?
Here.
Thank you.
The posting of the agenda, June?
The agenda was posted on before October 28th according to our government code.
We have any other comments?
Did you, we do not, but did you have any changes on the agenda, acceptance of the agenda or anything like that?
Oh, sorry. I don't. Does anyone else have any changes to the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yeah.
Ed McBride? Four to zero, accepted. There was no public comment. No one, no one has written in.
And I have a motion to accept the consent calendar.
All move.
A second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Item number four is our administrative reports. Do we have some reporting for the friends, June?
They are not on the meeting. Interesting, I didn't hear from them either. I think it's status quo and that they haven't done anything right now. They're doing, actually, they're doing some social media pushing, trying to promote memberships and, and promote their Facebook page and their website. Their website's Friends of the Library, friendsofthepalmspringslibrary.org. And their Facebook, they just go to Facebook and search Friends of the Palm Springs Library. And they're trying to build awareness about the friends and since they're not making as much money as they used to because they don't have the indoor book sales going on right now. So that's my report.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from the Library Foundation?
I don't believe so, Ed. Unless you have something, Ed. I know that they're trying to build their roster of acquaintances.
I don't know if this is the right point to ask this question, but I know last month in the minutes we said that we wanted to have a letter sent to the, the foundation regarding some fundraising that was mentioned for the library. There were some things that Jeanie asked us to approve and we approved some of them, but we wanted another letter out to the foundation to ask them to, you know, to do some fundraising on the other things. Was that sent out?
No, they haven't had a meeting yet and I know, Ed, that's probably something that we would discuss at the next meeting, which is taking place next week, right? So, and then I would think that it should be something like, Ed should probably, like, we could write the letter together, right? Do you think, Ed?
That's pending.
They didn't have a meeting last month, so that was, that got, got delayed.
Thank you.
But I made an.
Anything else, June, from the foundation?
No.
Library staff?
So the library is still not open to outdoor ser-, to indoor service, but we do continue to offer our pickup service for library materials, printing, and our craft kits, which have been very popular. And we have, just a reminder that we still do, we offer Wi-Fi service in the parking lot. And also I want you to know that the Sunrise Park restaurants are open daily and that's available over in the pavilion parking lot. So if you are using our park, there are restaurants available. Our library agogo service in October saw a huge jump in appointments. We had 1,304 appointments in the month of October. And in September, as an example, we, we had 1,008. So I think we saw a good jump for October. And we attribute this to our craft pickup and service and just a general uptick in our customer holds. So people have really been using our service and we're very happy about that. Our virtual programming, we still continue to do our weekly storytimes on Facebook Live. And then we have been doing weekly teen live events with our teen librarian. And this month's, November's Craft Along is a little pony bead craft with harvest corn and little pumpkins. So it's a little kit that families can, we're gonna do a demonstration video and then, and then the families can request to stop by and pick up kits to take home. That one is a choking hazard, so we do not recommend that for children under three. Our teen online event is an owl pellet dissection program. So you can pick up our pellet kit in advance and then follow along on Zoom with our teen librarian as, as he does his dissection. And then you can share your screen and show what you, you've discovered in your owl pellet. So, kind of gross, but also very, very interesting to see what's, what they vomit. It's essentially a little, like, you know, and a cat has a hairball. Owls vomit up what they can't digest. So it could include bones and other things. Our adult program is not so gross. It is a job searching workshop, job searching in the time of quarantine. This is part one. This one covers resumes, cover letters, and online applications. And so we're going to show that program live tomorrow. And then it will be as a recording that you can go back and review if you're not able to watch, watch it live. So that one will be available on our, probably a clickable link through our website, on our Facebook page as well, and then on our YouTube channel. So multiple sources to get to that. Scott Beegan is our librarian who teaches that class and he does a great job in, in explaining how to do job search. The Palm Springs Library was a voter assistance center, as you probably know, October 31st through November 3rd. And many people took advantage of the in-person service with, when we had lines of people waiting throughout the day. They weren't humongous lines, but they're lines. So there were a lot of people using the service. The parking lot looked like it used to, very busy and active. So that is what is happening at the library.
Couple of questions?
Sure.
Two things. One was that when I got the last update, the library, I think it's the one that had the cookbook thing going on. I wanted to forward that to some friends of mine, but then I thought, maybe I'd need to encourage people to actually get on this mailing list. I don't think we actually put people on the mailing list when they actually sign up for a library card. That would probably create disclosure issues and all kinds of things. But if we want to ask people, if people want to become on this list, how do they go about and do that?
Good question. It's very easy. Just visit our website. The easiest website address is pslibrary.org. And that goes straight to our, our homepage. And if you scroll down about three-fourths of the way through, there's a little box that says, "Join our email list." And you fill out the form and then you're instantly added to the email list. And we send out a monthly newsletter, monthly. And then as we're able to, or if something's very important that comes up, we send out, you know, we might send out a, a program-specific blast or something. We don't send a lot of emails from that, so it's not going to be burdensome to people to join that list. But we do like to send out a monthly update of what's happening. And so it's great. Thank you for asking that question, because it's, it's actually really easy to join.
Yeah. And then also, I just wanted to point out that when you had requested last month, or you actually mentioned that you were like six people shy subscriptions to your YouTube channel. During the course of the meeting, I actually put that on my Facebook page and I think by the next day, you got those six people. So I, I would, you know, if you have situations like that that come up, let, you know, let us know. Because, you know, those, sometimes those are just really easy solutions and now you're using your new YouTube web address and your communication. So that's, that's really easy to do.
Yeah, and we have now 112 subscribers. So it's appalling. And you know what's great? We're posting some interesting videos, educational videos. And then one of them got almost 400 views because it was recommended as a next up. Like YouTube picked it to go to follow other Storytime programs. And so it got a lot of views. And then our caramel popcorn one got a lot of views because people were searching for recipes or videos on how to make caramel popcorn. And so it's just, it's an interesting dynamic of how we're getting people to, to learn about the library.
You know, I would almost, I don't know how to do this exactly, but maybe at some point, maybe in another newsletter, you could say that, you could remind people that they can actually share these videos with their friends. So that if they actually go and visit the YouTube channel and see something like that that they like, that it's very, it's very easy to just put the link to those things in an email to a friend and just share that. And it would generate a lot more interest in the library.
Maybe not.
That's all I got.
Any other questions or comments for June? Thank you. Treasurer's report.
Okay. June, could you bring up page nine on your packet? Okay, so this is step one. I don't know if you can, yeah, can you expand the screen so you can see the numbers? That'd be great. So, perfect. So you can see near that top line, the cash is 1-9-4-4-0-4-9-7-5. So that's our current cash figure. I noticed that we have a new interest receivable, so I don't know. I know on the agenda, we're talking about interest this, tonight. Maybe there's more to be, to be told about that, but I imagine that's just in the regular course of business of the city with our endowment fund to actually credit us for interest from time to time. If we could go to the next page?
Just a moment.
Or actually, two pages down.
Okay.
So in page 11, you'll see that the, the one expenditure that reduced our balances is this $2,000 that, for the PR. It says 5-1-0-4-0 PR library campaign, period expenditure is $2,000. So when you were looking at that $1,900,000 figure on the prior page, it's reduced $2,000 from the prior month for the PR library campaign. And, and I don't know, June, is that the end of the money that we had allocated or is that, there's some leftover for that?
There's one more, $1,000 more in the encumbrances outstanding column.
Okay.
So the available balance though is $5,263.46. So that's, that's what's available.
Okay. And that's all I have. I, I know I've been saying this month after month, but hopefully with the interest report, we'll get the, the treasurer's annual report next month.
Oh, and I wanted to add, you got some extra pages in your packet this month because we didn't, we did, either we gave you the 13th month from last fiscal year or it wasn't updated completely. I wanted to give you a most, the most recent close of the last fiscal year.
Do we want to go to that page? Does it show something about the interest income or do we want to talk about that?
We can talk about that when we get to that category.
Okay.
If you want. That way Sue and Marcus don't have to wait.
Perfect. So that ends the treasurer's report.
The number seven A tonight for us is to discuss the questions that we've had as a result of our consideration of funding the next phase of the library project. So what I would like to do, as you guys know, I have invited Marcus Fuller and Sue Hall to come before us and to help answer some of these questions. I fully anticipate that we, this may result in other questions. If it does, then we'll, we'll continue down this path. But I thought that I would read the questions for the record so that they are in the record and in the recording. And I am the one who identified who I think would be able to answer, but I've already informed Marcus and Sue that that doesn't mean that they, they can't jump in and help provide some clarification on some of these questions. So the first question that we had was, once this next phase is completed, what will be the next phase? And can you give us an idea on scope and cost of that phase? I propose that to Sue.
So first of all, I want to just get you to, just very briefly, to how we got to where we are today, what, what we've done so far. And in the library building project, we've done some work with the library prior to that. We were, we were involved in site selection and we finished that last spring, spring, Ed? I think. And at the end of that project, basically, there had been agreement on the committee that worked with us that you wanted to remain, put a new library, renovated library on the new site. So the next piece in building a library process, because it's very distinct steps until you actually get to put the shovel in the ground and open the library. This next piece, and the piece that's in this proposal that you all have, is basically, it's, it's called building the library's program, which I think is a little bit of an anomaly because you think of a program being something that the library is gonna offer for seniors or kids or whatever. And essentially, what it's doing is defining what's gonna happen in a new library, what that's gonna look like, and how you're gonna use the space. And everything that the library sort of does is looked at and in this phase of the process, and then what it might do. And then at the end of this project, what you actually have is from, you know, the various ways that you've gathered input for creating this program or vision, if you would, for a new library, that is then sort of takes a fork. And one of the next pieces in the project, the next phase, would be to hand over all of this data. This is what we want to happen in a new library. And this is what we'd like the space to look like and to be used. And this is where it will be special and different from the current library. That gets turned over to your architect. And he or she or their firm then takes all of that sort of subjective descriptive materials and also more objective in terms of collections and technology and things like that that have been identified. They take that and then they begin to build the framework of an architectural rendering. So what's gonna happen at the end of that process is they're gonna come back with, here's the design that we've created that will meet the needs that were identified in this vision or program planning process. And at the same time, the foundation will be getting ready for a feasibility study that will take that same data and create a case statement. And that case statement is what the foundation will then take out to the community in terms of meeting with potential donors, corporate, other funders and say, okay, here's what the new library is gonna look like. We're gonna, we're gonna have the drawings from an architect and we're gonna have the ideas and the vision for what's gonna go on in the library. And we want you, Ed McBride, to react to this and tell us what you like and could you get excited about this? And would you consider being a donor and at what level? So this, the phase right after this is where you really start getting very, very concrete, both in terms of the architect and then what the foundation will do with this. I can tell you that the feasibility study is probably gonna cost you $30,000. You know, give or take $5,000 on either side. And that will largely be determined by how much money the city determines it's gonna put in to the, to the eventual project. And so the foundation will know how much it needs to go out and raise from private funding. So that component, as I say, will cost you anywhere from 25 to maybe 32 to $35,000. In terms of an architect and doing architectural run renderings and whatever work they want to do with the city and the library, I honestly don't know that. I don't know what architectural firms cost out in Palm Springs. Because you have such an iconic architecture out in Palm Springs and because you are more building-centric and building design-driven than most other cities that I've ever worked with, you need a very special architect to make sure that you get the kind of a design that's gonna fit with the space you're in and all of the other significant buildings in the community. So to be honest with you, I couldn't possibly tell you what that would cost. Ed has worked, I know, with architects and may have a better answer to that. Marcus, I don't know, I assume you've worked with architects on other city buildings, so may, you may be able to answer that question certainly better than I can.
I think that, as I suspected, these questions will lead into potential follow-ups. It is, it was my understanding when we were further along and having this conversation, Marcus, that the, the city pretty much said to us that when it comes to an architectural firm, you know, that's when the city will pick up and you have architects on staff, you, you would handle that part of the next phase, assuming that back then we, we thought that we had money, we had, you know, the funding to do this. So I guess the question then bounces to you. It's just a follow-up to this next phase question, is if we're ready for an architect, you, you guys kick in and take over. Is that correct or can you correct me?
Yeah, that's normally when we take over is when the project's been, you know, fully funded and, and ready to move forward into design and into construction. Given the potential cost of this project, whether it's rehab of the existing library or a new library, you know, I, I think the council needs to understand the full cost of it and whether to proceed with the design phase ahead of having the construction funding programmed. Generally, architectural services on something like this is gonna be at least 15% of the cost of the project, if not more. So it's gonna be a big ticket item and we wouldn't want to incur all that cost and have, you know, beautiful plans sitting on a shelf somewhere waiting to be dusted off, you know, later when we've got the funding in place, but.
We had the plan.
So Marcus, I'm wondering if this is a little chicken and egg question, though. Is, because if the city is going to hire the architect or use one of their own architects or whatever, you mentioned sort of knowing what the cost of the project is, but you don't really know the cost of the project until the architect has finished doing their own design work, right? Or did I hear you wrong?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think we need to take a couple of steps back. So council approved your contract amendment to do the programming phase. That was going to inform us on, you know, what programming is, is required now with a modern library. And can that program be accommodated in the existing library? Or dictate the size of a new library? That's kind of where we left off. And then we would need to continue the discussion on the benefits and disadvantages of building new versus rehabbing existing. Now, this is just me, but given where we're at and the fact that we had to use all of our accumulated Measure J funds, we may, may want to reconsider and really focus on the benefits of staying in the existing library. I think that obviously we need to understand the cost of rehabbing a library versus building new. If you have other costs, if you build new, because we've talked about it, what do you do with the old library? We still have the ongoing operation maintenance costs with the existing library. I don't see a lot of people that would want to come and, and rent the library from us. So there's a lot of issues to be evaluated on that decision. My sense is it's gonna be overall less expensive to rehab the existing library and make it a beautiful, modern library. But, you know, that, that decision's gonna be, require input from a whole host of other stakeholders in the public and a lot of additional analysis. But I see value to getting the programming scope completed, so we at least have a starting point for those discussions. But we can understand, well, you know, everything's really going electronic, so we really have a lot of capacity in the existing library. We just need to refresh it, reorient it, put the main entrance back towards sunrise, do whatever. You know, all these things that could make our existing home even that much better.
So is your opinion that because of technology and whatever our programming needs, that it's going to be cheaper to actually use the existing space?
Yeah, that's what my sense is.
And, and that's given the, the age of the building and the required renovations that are gonna have to be to make it up to, you know, up to code these days.
That it's less expensive to stay in the building.
Isn't it generally known that new buildings are generally cheaper than renovating?
I don't know that that's true, no. I mean, if you think about it, the bones of the building are fine. They may need some minor structural upgrades. The systems need to be upgraded, you know, but you're gonna have all those costs plus, in a new building, plus all the fixtures and furnishings and the ongoing O and M of that building. So we have to look at the whole lifecycle cost of new versus rehab.
So it wouldn't be uncommon for a library to ask in this next phase, because not all libraries have the luxury of knowing they've got money to expand a building, build a new building. They might say to their consultants, we want to build a program that would work in our existing facility. And I think that our consultant staff, they could keep that in mind. But we have to remember, if the consultants go out to the community and the community says, oh, we want our library to have blank. I don't know what the blank might be. They may come back and say, we heard from the community, by the way, that doesn't mean we have to do it, but the community would love to see this. Therefore, we're not sure all of these things would fit into an existing building. That could happen, but that would be, that would be questions we would deal with then, you know? It's not a deal stopper. It's really us saying back to the community, well, we would love to do that someday, but we can't do it under all the other things that are our higher priority. It's just a prioritization of the program, right? Sue, in this next phase, that's gonna determine, and also, for those of us who are on the building committee, I don't think we ever expected that we were going to have a brand new building. We were gonna use the current building and maybe expand or enhance it in some way. So I don't, I don't think the expectation is there now that we were gonna do anything that wouldn't try to use that existing building.
No, we, it was left at, there were two options. So when we went through that whole process on site selection, we ended up, the community ended up deciding.
There we are.
They like Sunrise Park, it's central. We left open the idea of staying where we're at, building a new library just to the south. And that's where the master plan came in, which doesn't need to happen now. But the master plan was important because that informs how you design a new building and what uses and uses are gonna occur within the whole park and what we do with the Frey JC building and all those other factors. So I, I think, I think that whole debate. So I think, I think that whole debate or analysis on whether we stay in the building or build a new building is still on the table. And I don't want anyone here on this meeting thinking that I've made a decision and that we're going to stick in the building. I'm just concerned because I think we're even more challenged than we were before on trying to accumulate back the Measure J funds we have, which again was only a drop in the bucket. We only had 1.8 million and we probably need 15, 20, I don't know. It's hard to say.
I think though.
My gut's telling me it'll probably be better if we end up staying in the building. But again, the community may say, no, we don't want to be in the old building, it's bad. Let's have a brand new building.
I don't think that will happen, but.
Go ahead, Ed, sorry.
I mean, I think that it was clear the community loves that building, but I don't want to change that.
I think they lean very, Juanita, wouldn't you say they lean very heavily to let's, let's do something with this current building because?
Oh, good.
Now, I think that the committee said something like, well, you know, if that building ends up not being enough space based on this next phase, could we see maybe an annex or another building built to accommodate some of the function that we could see happening? But I don't think that we ever felt like we would abandon that old building.
And we had an awful lot of discussion on that. I'm sorry. Can I call on Juanita?
No, that's exactly right. We talked about another building that could possibly serve as that administrative building. So that like, you know, Jeannie's office and things like that could be in a separate building. But yeah, really the consensus was we would keep the building, the existing building and just reconfigure the inside of it in order to accommodate the new plans or the new vision for the building.
Yeah, and I'd like to just say one more thing on this question when we were thinking about, okay, technology's coming to be so important, you know, maybe we don't need any more space or whatever. The thing that we are hearing more and more, almost universally on every strategic planning process or building planning projects we're doing, is that what people want the most of is community space. They want rooms where they can have meetings and can convene for, you know, focused activities or whatever. Which, so what you've gained by shrinking technology, you've just expanded by saying, we want gathering spaces. And I think people are actually going to think that even more after COVID, because we've all been, you know, pushed into isolation. And it's going to be even more important that the library becomes sort of the host where people can come together in the community. So and I think that the studies have also shown that what we thought was going to be essential in libraries 10 to 15 years ago, more computer space. And I think your library is an absolute perfect example where you have that gigantic amount of computer space. And once you get farther into the library, technically, you don't need a fraction of that for computers now, or only a fraction. Jeannie?
And it's funny, that used to be the reference room. So talk about an evolution. We don't need, we didn't, it was a giant reference room and microfilm, you know, machine.
I'm going to keep moving because we've got quite a few questions here. Are there any follow up questions from any of the trustees to this question for either Marcus or Sue that we can either post to them now for a quick response or I need to follow up? Thank you. Next question. What specific changes were made to this version versus the earlier version? Can you briefly describe how COVID-19 has impacted delivery of this new version of the next phase? Sue?
Sure. So there's basically four components to this process. I don't know if you've all read the proposal recently. The first one is really looking at the, doing a physical inventory of the current building. We'd have to be on site for that. And it's looking at how you use your current space, you know, what's your collections, what's your collection growth? What's the furniture? What's the parking? You know, how's the space physically used? The second piece of it is data collection and analysis. And we look at everything that the library currently does. Collections, programs, services. So essentially what's happening in the library versus, you know, what's the physical plant look like? The third piece of this is going to go into the community and by way of a community survey. That's not going to change. None of these first three things are going to change in the revised proposal. The big change over here is we had built our proposal around going out to Palm Springs and spending a week or more onsite and conducting focus groups, community listening sessions, town halls, whatever you'd like to call them. Meeting in groups with the staff, conducting interviews possibly in small groups and individual stakeholders. And we can't do that now. And so what we're being forced to do now, if you decide to go on with this proposal, is do an awful lot of this electronically. And so it would primarily be done with Zoom sessions, excuse me, or other platforms like this. We probably will be doing as much phone interviewing as possible. And I'm just doing a process, I'm working with the Atlanta Fulton Library System in Georgia. And what we essentially had started out with a similar process, we're now ending up doing everything electronically. I'm no longer in love with Zoom sessions. They, what we would have done with you all in four to six town hall meetings or focus groups or whatever, I would anticipate now, we would be doing in two to three or more times the number of gatherings, Zoom gatherings. So we could be doing anywhere from 12 to 15 different sessions or more. Actually, the logistics and putting all of these together take more time than setting up a town hall meeting and just inviting people to come. You're doing more targeted meetings. And you're just, you are losing some things in the ability to be able to just get a whole room full of people. But what you're gaining is the ability to manage smaller groups of people who can interact more easily. And there's a synergism in terms of just developing ideas and suggestions of, we could do this. And oh yeah, if we did that, we can do this. So where there are challenges to doing it differently, there are also opportunities. But it really radically changes a major component of the proposal. So of the four sort of steps in this process, this is the biggest one. And the area where we, in the community survey right before, excuse me, you're doing the real broad swath. You're asking big picture questions about strength and weaknesses of the current building. And, you know, you can ask some big questions about what would you most like to see in a new building? Where are you in this phase that I'm discussing now where we're switching things up a little bit? You're digging a lot deeper. So where a session like this could be advantageous is you could hear from fewer people at one time and actually get deeper into the questions. And as I mentioned before, sort of idea generation among smaller groups of people. Does that sort of answer the question? Makes sense?
Anyone else?
Sue, I didn't realize there was a revised scope of work. What's the fee? It was $90,000 before.
The fee went down? And we did submit that to you all, I believe, a couple of months ago. And, you know, as I was, as I'm going to address in the final question, and we weren't able to do this, I understand. If, we wouldn't even mind a not to exceed budget for something like this. We wanted to do what I think on our last project, because we didn't know what it was, how many, how many meetings that site selection was going to cost. We don't know, to be honest with you, how many Zoom sessions we're going to have to get all the data we want on this. To make sure that when we come out of it, you've got something really, really concrete. So, I mean, it could cost even less. We dropped it $10,000. You know, it could come down another $10,000 if we could have, if we could have a not to exceed budget. And personally, I'm semi-retired. I'm not in this to make a lot of money. I really like this project. I really want to see you get a new library. I am emotionally and personally invested in it because I've spent a lot of time out there now and have come to like Palm Springs, but I also think you deserve a very cool library. So I'd like to make this as affordable as possible for you. So anyway, I wished I could be more specific about, okay, we go from this to this. We went from apples to oranges in terms of how we data gather and it's what it's going to cost you. We're just starting to learn about this kind of a logistical way of gathering input from the community. So I'm not dodging it. I just can't give you an exact projection here.
Hey Sue, I don't seem to have, I didn't seem to get that revised project, but if you could send it to me.
It's very simple what we, I will, I'd be glad to send it to you.
Yes.
And basically what I did, and it was right around the time we were signing, I thought. And what I did is I took the current proposal, added in some new language to address the COVID situation and highlighted it. So I'd be glad to send that to you as soon as I get off. I don't know if I can do it now or not.
So one thing, if your file size is really large, I don't get them. So sometimes that happens to me when.
Really large file. Ed, you got it, didn't you? Really? Well, this goes back a lot of months, but I remember, I remember sending it to people. So a lot has happened then.
Consider that a follow up to this, as you'll share with us the latest version. But it sounds like, because you got a thumbs up from Marcus, that the original price has dropped at least $10,000, maybe $20,000. So if you firm that up for us.
The other place, and I'm jumping down to question six. The other place where the budget will go down is the travel expenses. Because we would probably still make one visit out there where we could inventory the current library and meet with a program planning committee. But we wouldn't be making two to three trips out there as we originally planned. And we only invoice in terms of actual travel costs. So that would, there would be a savings there as well.
So hold that thought, because I'm reading the questions into the record. So I want to make sure that we cover those if you don't mind. Question number, any follow up to question number two from any of the trustees? Question number three. Do we need to include the Sunrise Park master plan in this phase? Since it really is a focus on, this phase is a focus on programs that need to be included in the newer updated facility? I'm going to, I'm going to ask Marcus to respond to that first before Sue, you respond. But Marcus, do you mind?
Sure. We decided that the master plan could lag as the programming, you know, the programming really needed to proceed it. So I don't, I don't see it as urgent at this point. And, you know, the RIO's team really wanted to have some of the programming information to be able to start their master planning effort. And their, you know, their fees, I recall, wasn't cheap either. It was like $100,000 or something. And the master plan analysis will change if we're going to end up staying in the same footprint and we don't need another annex building or whatever the programming decides.
Thank you. I think, Sue, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't think that the two plans should be married at this point. That's not, that shouldn't be an outcome of the program planning process. I think the RIO's group might be a good stakeholder group to talk to, to put in on a session like this. Because I'm sure they've already got some idea of what they're thinking. They may already be thinking about other strategic partners that could go on the entire Sunrise site that would be worth thinking about in terms of the program plan. But I wouldn't put them in as a part of this process, maybe just a stakeholder group to discuss with.
And I would just, as a follow up to that for both you, Marcus and Sue, it would make sense to me that the master plan would fall into the next architectural phase, correct? I mean, if there.
Yeah.
The architect would need to know maybe more from that plan than, than they would at this point. I may be wrong. What do you think?
Yeah. Yes.
Any follow ups to this, this question about the Sunrise master, Sunrise Park master plan?
I just wanted to clarify, I don't, is there a financial consequence about not doing that?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
All right. What do you, what do you mean? I don't mean that to us?
Well, I'm just thinking about the idea that if Sue's work acts independently of whatever the RIO's group envisions, and they're just sitting in the meetings as a stakeholder, that at some point, if they decide to inject themselves more vigorously, that might actually, I don't know, alter everybody's expectations and, you know, and make us have to start from square one again on something. I don't know.
I wouldn't think they'd have that kind of input into a program plan. It would just be, it could be interesting to hear what they're thinking. But I think of the library's program plan as very distinct, boundary and finite. Whereas the master plan, I just, I think of as broader. But I think that they will be working with the library's plan as opposed to having a lot of input and any input other than, you know, maybe just to see if they've got any other thoughts that might come to play. But I can't see a financial impact on that.
Well, I ask because my impression of what happened after the building committee presentation to the city council was that there was a consensus among the city council that there really should be a master plan, you know, project that had to do with the entirety of Sunrise Park. And so our process, which was solely on the library, didn't seem to make much sense to continue independent of the entire master plan. So it sounds as if we're back to acting independently and then bringing in the master plan people after we've done our work. And I don't think that was what the city council was really envisioning.
I guess once you decided that you wanted to build or renovate on the site of the library and not take over, let's say, another large chunk of the, of the park. I did feel that it was more a distinct project than one that was necessarily integrated. I think the focus in the conversation with the, the site planning committee was where could there be some synergism in the park with, you know, Boys and Girls Club or other organizations that might situate themselves in the property? But it was more a synergism than it was, how are we going to function as one site sort of?
Well, I just want to clarify that because earlier in this conversation, it was presented that the building committee, which in my mind was really a site location committee.
Right.
Had a discussion about the library building itself. And in tonight's presentation, part of that discussion was, how do we improve the library? And part of that discussion included an annex. And Juanita already mentioned that part of that thought was like putting an extra, you know, Jeannie in an office space somewhere adjacent to the building. So I know that the community has been talking about this. And because that discussion has already happened, I think the expectations are a little grander than just renovating the existing space. Or if not that grand, then at least we should be putting that into consideration before we actually present something to the community. Because, you know, or, you know, maybe as Plan A, just renovate the building, Plan B, renovate plus annex. But renovate plus. Plan B, renovate plus annex. But renovate plus annex includes the master plan. So I.
But once again, that's the next phase. That's not the phase we're talking about tonight.
But we're paying for the, planning for the next phase, right?
We're talking about paying for the planning to determine what goes into the building, not what the building's going to look like or where it goes or how big it needs to be. It will drive that next part of the phase, but this really is more of the community input as to what they would like to see in terms of services and space. So the master plan in my mind never had a connection to this next phase. And I'm not quite sure why it was even connected to this. To me, the master plan will kick in either independently while we're going parallel to that or if the architect comes back and everybody in this, in the world agrees that this building needs to be doubled in size, the master plan's got to say, yes, we want to do that and here's the space to do it. I don't think we're anywhere near that. I think we're talking about, do we want to offer ebooks in this building and have a collection of ebooks? Do we want to have an archive or do we want to have a meeting room? It really is not about the physical space just yet.
Dr. Oregon Department tonight, Colin.
Yeah, I just want to say that the master plan, one of the issues the master plan was to address was safety within the park. As also, and it needs to be able to address, if we do want to have an annex, we don't want to be limited by that plan. I just, I'm kind of the same page with David on this. I'm not sure what should be coming first and if the master plan is going to have an effect, a negative effect on decisions we make.
Okay. Well, I think, yeah, Anita.
So I'm kind of, I'm a little bit confused about this because if we are going to talk about programming for the library, one of the things that, that I, I've always thought of was that the way the entrance to the library is right now, it's kind of like a back alley entrance. And, you know, the old entrance that was on the other side of the building that was open or open to sunrise, that gave it a more elegant entrance, I always thought that that would be restored, that there would be access to the library from sunrise, from the, you know. I, I never envisioned that we would keep it the way it is now. So I think if we're going to create some kind of a, a new entrance or driveway into this, you know, grander building, I mean, the building's going to be the same, but just the, the entrance to it, that, that would be part of the master plan or no?
No. So the, the next phase that we're being asked to fund right now has nothing to do with where the entrance is going to be or what that building is going to physically look like. It's really more of what does the community see the library providing in terms of services? So that that can then dictate the size of the building or can it fit within the current structure? Then the architects are going to come back and say to us, well, in order to put this, all this stuff into the current space, we recommend that you put the entrance somewhere else or whatever. That, that comes in the next phase, not this phase. What we're talking about with the master plan, it just so happened at the same time that we were finishing up the site selection conversation. There was a proposal to the city by the RIOs group to look at the entire park and determine, is it the best use of all the facilities? Not just us, but the Boys and Girls Club, the Mizel, everybody on that piece of property. So we, we, we got grouped into that naturally because if we're thinking about expanding the building, then it might interrupt with the pickleball courts they want to put next door or it might interrupt with the parking flow. So that was why that master plan was important. But I still, my opinion, Marcus, you disagree with me, Sue, you correct me, is that the master plan for the park really is not in play for us at this particular next phase that we're being asked to fund.
Colin, I, I actually had both of those on the council agenda action. And we pulled the RIOs one off because the decision was made. We don't need to worry about the master plan just yet. We want the programming to really drive. Again, are we staying in the building? Do we have to enlarge the building? Are we going to build a new building? And then that can help us with the master planning of the whole park, which will be critical for how you design a new building or expand the existing library or build an annex. That would be definitely important once we start on an actual architectural path for the actual library, whatever that is. It's going to be important because you're right, Ed. Remember, council at one time was thinking about building all those new pickleball courts in the only area really around the library where we could build a new library. And we ultimately said no for a number of reasons, but mainly because that's the area where if we're going to build a library, it's going to go.
Right.
And then again, how's that going to work with everything else that's there? And the safety issues that, that we know are a problem.
I think I'd like to remind you.
Drove that master plan, if you guys remember, was the lack of parking. And if we said that we need expanded parking, well, then we might be encroaching, well, one way we could encroach is towards the Boys and Girls Club because we can't go to the stadium, right? So that master plan's, oh, wait a minute, before you start taking over pieces of land, we need to understand what I was going to go on this piece of property long term. So I, I hope we've answered the questions about master plan. And I, I just don't think that it has anything to do with what we're talking about tonight.
If you all could just remember this process one way, which is this process is to identify at the end of what's going to happen inside the building. Maybe in a courtyard, you know, outside or whatever. But it's, this is about activities and use of space inside the library and what the community's needs are for that. It's not, it is not a physical plant specific process. Jeannie?
I wanted to add too, about the program. It's also about things like the number of seats, the number of chairs on your traffic, the number of users that come in daily. We've already determined, we're about one chair short and we're about at least 100 parking spaces short. So we look at like just basics like that. And, and the shelving, how much shelving you need to cover your collection. And, all right, do you have the right size collection? Do you need to weed it? Do you need to build it? Collections need to grow. Spanish collection need to grow. Just the children's department need to grow. So they're like Sue, talking about just coming for a week. It's a busy week if you're evaluating everything and you do. You evaluate the number of toilets, the number of chairs, just everything. So it's not just like we need more programs. It's a program. It's a, it's a.
You know, we, remember, we asked the community to be present for this next phase to think big. That was our opportunity to have the library of the future, to quote, you know, a council member hosted. She said, we want a world-class library. Well, what does that mean? This next phase kind of defines for our community, what does a world-class library look at? Now, can we afford it? I don't know. But it's, it's a dream big and plan for services that we've never dreamed before, maybe. Maybe services that we have now to expand, you know. So I think that, you know, this next phase really is more about what we envision being served to our community. Any, any more questions about? Great discussion though. It's been a while and I have my senior moments. So we've had a lot of these discussions. So it's worth us repeating this. So, you know, these are all great questions and time to talk about. The next question was, will the city confirm where the library project will be placed once Measure J funds are returned? And this is the crystal ball question for you, Mr. Fuller.
Yeah. It's, believe me, it's frustrating that we, we now have a backlog of all those projects that were funded and canceled. And then how are we going to work? You know, we've been discussing that with the Measure J commission. How are we going to rank and prioritize all the previously funded canceled projects versus all the other projects that we need to fund and move forward with, including these big ticket items like the library and continuing our street paving projects and everything else? So it's, it's hard to say. Because keep in mind, we also need to, we have four other fire stations we need to address. It's just like, I don't know how we're going to do it. So we have a lot of, a lot of needs and the library is at the top too. So we'll, you know. Yeah. So I can't tell you. But I'll tell you that the programming is vital. I mean, Sue, I don't think that, is there, is there a timeframe by which you go through the programming and then that information goes stale? Like, I mean, I guess it's, it's a matter of how long it takes the community to maybe decide they want something different. But it seems to me that the programming effort would still have value and, you know, for, for a certain period of time, for, you know, years, I would think.
That's a great question. The years part, I would say maybe not so much because needs do change and at some point you have to commit to something. But I think we were, we are at a point when Tony, my other consultant that I work with and I have gone, have seen many, 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 many libraries, I'd say over the last five years and then parts of projects. And there, there is, we just did a look at current trends in new libraries and library buildings. And they haven't changed in the last five years. They're asking for the same kinds of things. They're asking for creative spaces and community spaces and small rooms and a large auditorium maybe. And technology, which was at the top of the list 10 years ago, you know, is way down the list right now. But I'd say you've probably got a 10-year timeframe for what you hear from the library community now. It's going to be good for at least a good 10 years, if not more. Because I think that what we're looking at now in terms of library building design is flexibility. And I think that's just one of the key things that people are looking for. I think rather than saying, could we sit on this and put it on a shelf for, for three or four years? My only concern is, and what we heard from the public during that last piece was, you know, this has gone, this is the third or fourth time that this potential project has gotten down the road and then dropped off. And you got some real momentum, I think, after the site selection. And then who saw COVID coming? It looked like we were just on a path to make everything happen. I would be sad for you if you had to lose that momentum because I think you're going to get funders, private funders behind this in a big way. Because what's going to come out of COVID is that the library is more important now than ever before. We've seen it with homeschooling, kids. We've seen it from people wanting places to go and meet together. I mean, it's, I'm trying to see the opportunities in post-COVID that weren't there before. So I would, I would personally hate to see you shelve this process for a couple of years. And the next phase, feasibility study, hire an architect, do all that, do a feasibility study, do a capital campaign. You're probably talking three years there, two to three years before you have a building. So the farther out you push this, the farther out you push this.
Well, and I don't know how relevant it is, but we just did this, I mean, it seems like just did it. We just did this in 2013. So we have the program from 2013. So we spent, we, the trustees, you all spent about $150,000 on a program and an architectural design to stay here. So we have that plan and I don't think it's lost. You know, it's not wasted. It could be something that could be built on or looked at. I mean, like Sue was saying, exactly the same thing. People want comfortable seating. They want flexible space. Just all the same things she said, exactly. That's still what people want. They want a community gathering space, meeting spaces, you name it. And it's all, it was all in there. We did all those studies already. So we have that information already too.
So then what I'm hearing, Jeannie, is that we really don't need to do this next phase?
It's up to you. I mean.
Well, I think that we're looking at you as the librarian. I mean, if you're saying that that previous study would be sufficient for you to present to an architect to build a building, why, why would we spend money to do the next phase?
Well, I don't even know if we need to present it to an architect because we had, we have an architectural plan. I mean, it's not blueprint shovel ready, but it was, it was pretty far along, I think. I don't know if Marcus agrees, but they did the civil engineering. They did, they did the studies for the seismic study, the mechanic MEP study. They did a lot of work.
I didn't think they had done the seismic study. Jeannie, is it in there?
Yeah, it's in there.
It was a high level feasibility and analysis.
Yeah.
Architectural drawings or anything like that.
Right, yeah. It would, it would be something that a builder could take and run with. It wasn't that, that level. But we had floor plans and the community had picked out of four designs. They had picked through, we had workshops and, and the community said which design they preferred. So.
Jeannie, did the community give input on the programming part of this?
Yeah. That, yes, they did. They, we used, we used stickers and they wanted good lighting, technology, access to technology, comfortable seating, parking. It's, it's all in there, what they preferred. And it was prevented, presented to council.
So that program is now, that program is at least seven years old.
Yeah, seven years old.
Your cycle, which we just heard, a 10-year cycle is about what you might expect without having to have it reexamined and maybe updated. So I guess the question would be, would we want to just have that plan reexamined? And first, Sue, this is for you, to see if what is there, it could be maybe not so much going through another total community review as much as a consultant review or professional review to determine how much of it is still good and can we, you know, use that instead?
But this is where I'm really wishing that my colleague, Tony Garvey, was on the call because I am a process consultant and she is a building expert. And I remember she spent a great deal of time reviewing those, those blue, well, they weren't blueprints, but those drawings and talking, I know with, I think it was in our first meeting with the site selection committee, that there wasn't a lot of support for the, the final drawing that had been selected. And I honestly can't tell you what the, what the discussion was around it because that's not in my wheelhouse.
Give me a follow up.
I could show you what, what the community said if you want, or I could just read it to you. I can share this little slide if you want to see it.
I mean, Jeannie, maybe this is part of the follow up to these questions. We need to see what's being proposed from library strategies and what's had been done. For me, I don't know if I need to go through that at this very moment, but, but I will do whatever the trustees want. I mean, do you want to? See that plan?
There were just, no, I was just going to say the eight design values that they really, that the, the community feedback was about.
I would defer to moving along and respecting Mr. Fuller's tone.
Okay, so let's include that maybe as a follow up to these questions then, Jeannie. So the, and actually, the next question to me is a spillover from what we, this discussion is. And that is number five, why the rush? Why don't we wait until we get a better handle on COVID and get better results from community input as opposed to spending funds and then being put on hold by the city and by other city funding? I think this is, this is a question to continue the discussion we just had. But I mean, your, your thoughts to this question, Mr. Fuller?
Well, the library has always been an important project. So like Sue said, we had some momentum going. So like Sue said, we had some momentum going. You know. Are we ever gonna do the library or not, really? And if we wanna keep moving forward? I mean, I honestly think we should continue to move forward with the programming side of it. Certainly Sue and her team can look at, you know, the Level Four, what was the name of the firm? I never remember.
Group Four.
Group Four. They can look at that. It obviously may have some value. But, you know, to me, if we can finally get to the point where we know what the library project is, then we can start finalizing, okay, what's a, what's a reasonable estimated cost for that project? And then you can start on your fundraising effort and we can start figuring out how we can prioritize our availability to provide funding for it from the city. And really get it on a path to where we can start delivering it. Otherwise, we're just gonna spin our wheels for years and years.
We have already.
That's why I asked, you know, how stale would the programming get if we, say, went forward with it and we're finished with it by sometime next year? And then we take, you know, three, four, five years to get to the point where we're building what we wanna program? It sounds like it will still have value at that point. The library board to really start moving forward with this, I think you would need to move forward with the programming now.
The only thing I would add to, sort of to build on what you, what you're saying, Marcus, is I think one of the things that, that individuals and groups are struggling with now is their, their weariness with uncertainty. I think people are really tired of not knowing where things are going. And that this, you might be able to use this as an opportunity to say, no, we're still doing this and here's what it's gonna look like. And here's when we think we might be able to, you know, a window of when we might be able to complete a new library project. So it would sort of be giving something for people to actually look forward to with a degree of certainty. So that may be, just be mumbo jumbo to anybody, so.
On either.
No, I, you know, I totally agree with that. I think that we've got some momentum going. I think that you're right that, you know, everybody, there's so much uncertainty right now, right? And everybody is being overly cautious, which is good. But I think that it's really important that we continue to move forward. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was what, what Jeannie was talking about, the previous assessment or programming that was looked at. I mean, I work at Katherine Finch Elementary School and we're making so many changes from two, you know, 2013 to now and the technology that is required now versus in 2013. I mean, with this new Zoom learning, I mean, everything has changed. So all of the things that we thought were so amazing and so modern and we were just on the cutting edge, even last year, you know, with this, with the situation we're in now has changed so dramatically. And I just feel like, I, I mean, I would love for us to be able to use that information, right? To help with this programming. But even though, I mean, I, I don't know, I haven't seen it, so I really can't tell you that it's good or bad. But I really would like to have a true assessment of that information to see if it really is viable for now and for the future. But absolutely, we need to get moving on this. We need to get rolling. It cannot be put on the back burner until later. I really feel very strongly about keeping the momentum going.
Okay, what, what, if the board were to decide to, to fund the programming scope, the council actions already occurred. That's what I'm concerned if the fee had gone up. So as it's gone down, they, you know, the action is still there. The council approved amending the contract for the $90,000 scope. At the time, we were funding it in Measure J. At this point, if the library board were to vote to use library trustee funds, it's just basically changing the account. And so I, I, I don't see a reason why we couldn't just proceed with the council's prior approval. If that's your decision.
Thank you. Any follow-up to question number five?
Yeah, the only concern I have there is we always seem to have a partner and then the partner disappears. And then we, we have in the past spent money on having things drawn up and they sit and we don't use them. So it was a waste of money by their decision that didn't involve any of us at that time. I, I just, I'm concerned on our strategy here. Can we, can we have somebody review what was done before? And update it as opposed to starting from scratch?
Can I have a clarification too about the reason Mr. Fuller is here tonight? Cause I, I, I think I got clarification just now about the fact that really part of this discussion is that the the financing for the continuation of the consultant's project is to come from the Board of Trustees as opposed to the city. So I suppose Mr. Fuller's role here tonight is just to affirm the fact that the city is still willing to go forward with whatever they approve, is that it?
Is that a question posed for Marcus? That was a question for you.
I don't know if I understand the question. So I was asked to be available to answer some of the questions that were raised. And that, that's why I'm here. So I'm not, I'm not following your question.
Then, then let me jump in and say, I mean, we invited Marcus because some of these questions, none of us could answer, including Sue. So it really was a city question, especially when it comes to a long-term commitment on Measure J. Can we count on that? I mean, there's no way that we could speak to that. And we asked Marcus to be here to weigh in and, you know, what does he think? And he's responded to that.
But they're really rhetorical questions, given the state of the city's finances, really.
Exactly.
So I'm sorry to take up more of your time, Mr. Fuller, but.
I don't think that's a mistake at all. I think that we add him here because, number one, he's been our, our city representative throughout this entire project and process. And we are getting questions around, do we want to continue to pay for this? The city is ready to sign the contract and now the funding is gone. Do we want to wait until the funding comes back? And I think that, remember, this started under, when Kathy was here, she posed this question to us. Is, do we want to use trust money to continue the project? Now, she's no longer here, but, you know, she brought this up as a discussion for us.
But I, I don't think any of those questions need Mr. Fuller's answer.
I disagree. They do need his input because he, if, if he was to say to us, hey, guys, there's no way that this is ever gonna make Measure J again for the next 10 years, then that's information that could, why, that's why we have the question, why the rush? Maybe we just table this all together and wait for the city to come back with funds.
But he, he's not giving us any definitive, any more definitive answer than the hypothetical you just raised.
Let's move on. I mean, we've had an answer to number six. And I want to read it for the record, is, I'm confused by the budget information, considering the three consultants and room and board. What is the range of cost? What is the most we are on the hook for? It seems like the trust is standing alone with a lot of money being spent on consulting. We need some partners with, and a product. I think that you, you've probably answered this, Sue, but would you like to restate your answer? Because you were talking to us about number seven at the time.
And I have to admit, I was a little confused about parts of the question. So I'll answer what I can.
Yeah, the question came from me, Sue. But go ahead.
Okay, I thought it came from Melissa. So can you elaborate maybe, Craig, a little bit?
Yeah, when I was looking over the budget that was submitted, there was a number of costs. And there was a not to exceed amount, which I cannot recall right now. I'm sorry, I can't pull it up. I don't have my computer with me. But there was all these different things listed. And when I started tabulating them, or the possibility what they could be, the number was getting quite high. And so that's why with this COVID, I wanna see where we're gonna be at. It doesn't seem like you're gonna come out here three times. It doesn't seem like you're gonna need hotels. So since I wrote these questions, you've answered part of this. But do you remember what the amount was? I heard tonight, yeah, what was the original cost?
The original cost was for $90,000 in consulting fees for two consultants, not onsite, but for two consultants to do all of the data gathering and input and analysis and reporting and then drawing up your program plan. And an additional $5,000 as part of consulting fees to have an onsite coordinator who would help identify who should come to town hall meetings and where are we gonna have them and how are we gonna get the information out? And basically make sure everything happens onsite. And the total in the revised budget that I sent you for all, that apparently got lost in the ether somewhere, for everything would have, would be a consulting fees of $5,000, $70,000. And then travel expenses and onsite expenses of another $10,000. And so that.
Could you repeat that? You, you cut out right when you said the amount.
I did that intentionally, thank you. I couldn't do that again if I tried. So the, the consulting fees for myself, Tony Garvey, a technology and communications person who would, you know, manage everything from AV to Zoom logistics and whatever, somebody onsite who would, who would be able to coordinate onsite logistics. The total for that was $70,000 at the reduced proposal. And then we did a not to exceed limit of $10,000 on travel expenses, which would obviously go down because we wouldn't be out there probably more than one time. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so then it sounds like we're at $75,000 now?
No, I think we're at 80. Yes, we are at 80.
80,000.
Yep. $60,000 for the two library strategies consultant. $5,000 for a technology and communications manager to just handle all of the communications and technology needs. And then another $5,000 for an onsite coordinator. Somebody would set up meetings and publicize things and so forth. And again, all of this is where I wish we could do a not to exceed budget. Because it may be less, it would not be more, but it could be less. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps. But now if we're looking at the possibility of having you spend time reviewing our existing plan that was done in 2013, does that save us any money or does that cost us more time? Or is that even worth it?
It may save you money if you decide that's the road you wanna go down. And we come back and look at that again and say, you know, this is a plan that could work. I would say that you've just about finished your shelf life or you're getting close to the end of it. Because when it was drawn up seven or eight years ago or whatever, things, community needs were different than they are now, maybe not radically different. But Jeannie, I haven't looked at that in a long time. I don't know if there was community meeting spaces and, or an auditorium or whatever in there. Can you refresh my memory?
The original, this plan was to stay within our footprint because of budgetary concerns. And so they just said, we'll just stay where we are. And so we, we ended up with a, a meeting room for 200, but it's got also a support column in the, in part of the room, so an obstructed view. So it was just, it was a, it was a program that fit inside this building. So it does have meeting spaces built in and.
Only one?
No, there were four small study rooms.
Oh, just study rooms, though, but not like a place where you could have a book club or something like that? It's an auditorium and, or a study room?
Yeah, we had a, the, the, the large community room was divisible. So about, well, it depends on which plan. One plan had 265 seats and then it could have a divider wall that would set up for a 20-person classroom or something like that.
I mean, if, if you brought together, one of the things that would occur on this is there's gonna be a program committee. And we could sit down with a program committee and say, okay, let's start with this, okay? Can we, how much of this can, how much of the, the program information could be kept from that study? And how much of the building design could be kept? Yeah, you could definitely save, save yourself some money doing that.
If there's no more questions for me, I, I do have to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus, for your help.
Thank you.
So are there any follow-ups to question number six? Did you get your answers on that one?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
And the last question, I think that we've also talked about, but the trustees would like an itemized breakdown of the estimated cost both pre and post-COVID. So I think you discussed that, but we haven't seen an actual piece of paper, but you, you did review where we were before and where we are now, right, Sue?
Yes, yes. And again, I, I could do that, but it would be sort of pulling some numbers out of the air because we don't know what meeting requirements will be changed, how many Zoom sessions we would have, what the coordinating piece of that all is. It's like, thankfully, we've never done this before.
Oh, so there have not been, in your experience, community Zoom meetings yet?
Nope, not to, for a project like this, no.
Are there any other questions that we might have after we've gone through these regarding us moving forward with a vote on, do we want to fund this next phase from trust fund monies or not?
Sue, if we were to give you a cap, we'd have to specify within that cap what we want you to cover, correct?
Right, yeah. Or we'd, you know, we'd work with you and, I mean, you telling us what cover and not cover. It might not be what you need to get, what, the end result you want. But we could certainly negotiate that, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I just don't know, Mike, and this is where I, I like, this is a Marcus question. If we, or maybe it's for you, Jeannie. If we, if we change the scope that's been approved by city council, is there, is it still okay? I mean, or will we have to start from scratch to go before city council to get them to approve it?
Having been through this process with your city council a number of times, I'd say it's not okay.
I was going to say, I mean, this, the scope, and the worst-case scenario is that we just submit it again. We just, we, we revise Amendment Three to, to be more accurate, to fit this specific project, if there's something that needs to be done. It's, Amendment Three is pretty vague as far as the, the, the itemized details are not listed in there. It's just the scope of services, the program planning services for the building project, Phase Two. We obviously would look at that. If we need to do it again, we'll just do it again. But if it's, if it's okay, then the only thing I need to do is revise my cover sheet to tell them which account number it's going to be paid for. And then send it through for our city attorney review and city manager signature.
And I guess that if, if we're funding it, then the, then library strategies would be reporting to the board in terms of how they're doing, the scope. We would have that ability to negotiate what we want them to cover in this next phase, correct? Or would the city want to still have a hand in that?
It's still a city project, so the city would have a hand in that. And I think that. And I think that I, I think as, I think, Sue, most of the scope is still, nothing would, none of that part of the project would change. It's just the methodology of gathering the information instead of having community in person. You would be doing that virtually.
And Jeannie, I'm almost positive that, that you had this revised proposal at some point, largely because it's been formatted to have you submit it to the council. And I know that it it had been signed from our end because that's what they wanted and sent back. So I will resend it again, but I'm 99% sure that you guys thought out there.
Well, this went to council in February, so I don't know. I don't think it would have been revised for COVID or the bird stuff.
Well, remember, it was ready to be signed the day they shut us down.
Yeah.
Really was on the council agenda to be approved and executed and all over.
Yeah, I've got on my, on my cover sheet, I have that it was approved February 27th. So that was-
That wasn't right. That would not have had the-
No, I mean, they were ready to sign the document and spend the money, remember? And they said, no, we can't spend this money because it was measured J funds at that time. So that's when it was halted.
Yeah, but the the documents that I have are pre-COVID. So I, I don't know where it is.
Signed, right? I mean, they were ready to sign off on it, what I understood from-
You were ready to sign off any larger contract.
Got you.
It was, it was in, it was in approval to be signed, but it just didn't, it got held.
Okay. All right, guys. So if there's no more questions, I think then the next question-
Ed, I have a question for you.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Do you need me anymore?
No, I guess not.
Okay. I'll send you that proposal, okay? Does anybody else need me?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Yep.
So the information we've gathered tonight, do we have any more follow-up? So Craig, you said you have another question that you-
Yeah, I just have a question for, I'm throwing it out to the group. Do you see anybody else partnering on the cost of this besides us? Do you see friends stepping up? Do you see the foundation stepping up to defray some of this cost? Because the city's not, and the city may not for a number of years.
You know, I-
I would say the friends, the friends would not step up on this type of a project. They're willing to step up on things like purchasing furniture for a new library and and helping, they're very supportive in that method. But I don't, I don't know that they, I don't think they would be interested in supporting this level.
You know, my comment kind of goes, my thoughts about this kind of go around what Juanita was saying earlier, which was how the response in her school has been to COVID and how they've been innovative and responsive to the needs of the community. And I think from what I've observed and and the groups that I've been involved with is that we've all evolved and we've changed our day-to-day lives. And we've also changed a lot of how we communicate with other people and how we get our information. And big question, once we do get a vaccine or we start coming back to what we consider our normal lives, is what will we want to continue to do and how will we do it? And if we start doing a survey before we get to that point about what people want and need, it's all going to be based on what we used to know. And we might actually have evolved and changed, just like people who have actually had to, like school systems. And I just, I really can't see how doing this survey at this point would be forward-looking in a way that would be meaningful.
That brings us back to question number five, the first part there, why the rush?
Well, I can tell you the rush and I can see Juanita is like coming up to it because there's momentum, right? There's, we got the community engaged. I don't know if the community is still engaged to the level that they were last summer when we were really having this discussion. We were, you know, getting to the point where, you know, wow, we've actually inspected sites. We got people talking about it in the community. That's why I think at the bottom of this page, I suggested for Ed to write a Valley Voice article or something with his son to actually, you know, get people talking again. Because I think the conversation may be started. But I don't know if it's, we're at the point where we need to commit to spending money on something that, you know, I don't know how, what are we going to do? I mean, even library agogo was something that really was, you know, something that was innovative and it worked. But, you know, maybe we'll want to continue with library agogo when when we're back to normal, when the doors are open. Are we still going to see the same number of people showing up in the doors once they've gotten used to, you know, takeout from the library? I don't know. We might have to change the entire way that we attract people to this building.
I keep wishing I had a drive-through right now.
So David, are you suggesting? David, are you suggesting we delay this until we can collect more accurate data? Or we should do this contract now and throw the dice?
Well, I'm not in favor of doing the contract now.
Okay.
I just really feel that we've got some momentum. And I think that if we want to keep that momentum, we have to keep moving forward. We can't put a stop right now because that, that little bit of momentum that we have is going to completely disappear. And then we're going to have to try and re-energize everybody to keep going. And I just feel like this project has been put off and put off and put off. And I feel like we need to, we need to go forward and we need to commit. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at.
See, I'm thinking that the data we collect right now will be inaccurate, not any better than what we collected in 2013. But maybe we wait a little bit and then do the contract and that might get our momentum going again. Because I think what's going to happen is we're going to collect data now and then we're going to have a hold because no money is going to be available for us to do steps two and three.
Do you think, do you think we could possibly put a timeline on that hold so that it's not just constantly kicking the can, right? So that we do make some kind of timeline? So we are committed to this project in a more concrete way and not just kicking the can down the road?
Yeah, I would say maybe no earlier than when the library reopens and maybe three months afterwards when we can figure out what, how people are using it.
So you want to have three months of normal library usage before we start anything new? Is that correct?
Yeah, because then you're going to have people at least having a sense of reference other than what it used to be in the past. They'll say, oh, I'm using the library for this now as opposed to what I used to use the library for.
Okay.
We may need to have a drive-through for book pickup that wouldn't come up in a survey now, but might come up after we've been open for a couple of months. So Dave, I would support your, your idea of waiting till the library reopens up, wait three months and then look at renegotiating our contract.
Okay, so can I get a motion, then?
I'll second David's motion, if that's your motion, David.
Okay, that's my motion, that we, that we take up the consultant's contract issue when the library reopens and perhaps have three months of data after that.
Right, right. Okay, I second that.
All in favor, no call please, Jeannie.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
You made a good point, David. Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Or zero.
I love your enthusiasm, Juanita. Keep it up, keep it up.
If enthusiasm were dollars, we'd be so rich.
And let's not make this another Almeyer like we had last night on election. So 7B, report about library resolutions. Jeannie, I think you were on the agenda to talk to us about that.
I did a virtual meeting with the city clerk's office and we did some searching where I could see the screen too. And I, in your little memorandum in your report on page 23, it doesn't appear that we found anything additional that was, that's relevant. There was a resolution number 219 establishing the board of trustees, but that was 1939. And I don't think that's a big surprise to anyone. And then there was another resolution that established citywide term limits, but that was citywide. So it wasn't anything specific to the library board of trustees. We did get a training today and eventually we'll get access to the new system and we can really dig in if we want to and see if we find anything else. But right now, there wasn't really anything, I didn't see anything to bring forward to show you.
Oh, and in your memo, you also mentioned that you're attending a training in November?
Yeah, that was today.
Oh, okay. You're saying that there was no, nothing or like, is that going, now that you're trained, are you going to be able to see if there's something else or?
Yeah, right now, we don't, we don't have a login for that new system. But since we attended the training, now they're going to give us access and and get us access to that system. So Lisa and I both attended the training this morning. And then once we get access, then we could dig around all we want. But I helped with the search, the search terms and trying to find, use different keywords and things like that. But we, we'll see if we find anything else. But we did a pretty extensive, extensive search. Expect to find anything new.
Any other questions for Jeannie and this topic? Item 7C, discussion about the library trust funds and long-term location of funds. I think, is there a supporter, does this come up from you?
Trustee Kelly had just asked that we keep it on the agenda. I don't know if you have anything you want to talk about?
Well, the reason I want to keep it on the agenda is because I was hoping that maybe we'd get some more definitive information about the library resolutions. But just to refresh, I mean, really, the the issue, which has been kind of bubbling as long as circus for a long time, has been, do we keep this endowment with the city or do we take it somewhere else? And, and in my kind of musings about this have been that at some point, we might, if we get serious about this, talk to maybe an outside counsel or a professional accountant who has some legal background to assess the pluses and minuses of doing such a thing. And having, you know, access to the legal documents that have our authority drawn out really is kind of the first step before you actually ask somebody to make a decision on that. So I don't have a specific proposal to do at this point. But, and it may, it may in fact be that when we do actually, and I would probably substitute this agenda item for a discussion of the endowment's annual report. Because I think in that discussion, which we'll make sure gets done in December because I'm tired of saying it every month, that we really do look at those numbers and say, does it make sense to actually get some outside help to make, make the decisions about, do we keep this money in the city or not?
Well, I think I brought up the last time and I can maybe help in the future. I've, on the two of the other foundations I'm on, they're looking at the same issue of whether to move their funds or how their funds should be invested. So I will ask them, once the final decisions are made, if I can share that information with the library foundation, if that's information that you would like to receive.
Yeah, or at least just keep in your back pocket. I think, you know, especially if any of the boards that you're working with have reliable outside help, you know, it would certainly be nice to have a few business cards in our rolodex in case we make that decision.
Okay, I'll, I'll gather that information after I get permission to release it.
Great. That would be helpful.
7D, report on interest income earned by, I'm sure, fiscal year 2020.
Okay, so David Kelly, do you want to report or you want me to report?
I guess you should report.
Okay, okay, let me share the screen. Okay, so in your packet on page 15 is the revenue audit trail for the end of fiscal year 2020. So June 30th, 2020, we finally have the full report of the interest income. One moment, I check one more thing, make sure I don't have a, an email. No, okay. So we have, we show quarter one, quarter two, quarter three. And then there's a, there are three transactions. And there's that $4,981.69 that David Kelly is asking about. And it's just a reversal there. So it's very bizarre, but anyway, there, my guess is that they applied that, those funds. It says fiscal year 19. So my guess is that they applied those funds in the wrong year and they backed it out for some reason. But the finance department, they're-
Why are you, why are you focusing on that particular number? Because the number, the number I was looking at was on a previous page and it was 2,925.66.
Oh, I thought you were asking about $4,000.
No, no, the 2,000 is right above it, right there. Yeah.
Yeah. That one, now, what I was told in the past was that they will do quarter one, two, three, and four. And then there are some investment tools that they use that you get an annual amount. And so it looks like they, maybe that's what that $2,925 is. But the bottom line is that you earned $34,058.51 in interest income. And the question, does that money automatically go into your cash? And the answer is yes, and it goes in when it's added. So in September, $10,000 was added and so on and so forth. So you earned $34,000 last year in interest income, which is terrific.
At what rate is that, do we know?
You probably just have to do the math yourself, but the 2 million, yeah, exactly.
Wow.
Seventeen percent?
So I'm thinking it's 3.4, no, 1.7%?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Wow. Okay, well, it's obviously worth looking at too.
Yeah, well, you have to remember that the city is really trying to invest in risk-free assets and they probably have a high level of liquidity requirements. So it doesn't give you a lot of interest potential.
And I would say, you know, as a city government, they're, they're very conservative, safe investments. So they're not going to have the, the, the risk or reward of those riskier investments.
Yeah. No, but thank you for this. This is very helpful.
Yeah, it was good to know. I found out from the finance department. They said the money goes right in and, and then I found, I was able to see it. So very confident. And then the, I don't see which page it's on, if it's on. We already have our first quarter interest income rec- We already have our first quarter interest income recorded. Find the right page. Not on that one. I think what, maybe I didn't include it, but I have already seen quarter one interest income applied. Maybe it's going to be on your next month. I have that information somewhere.
You know, I think.
You already earned your first quarter.
You know what I think, and I'll, I'll look at this a little more carefully, but I think probably all those numbers before, those $10,000 figure numbers were just estimates. And when they did this, this last bit here and with the negative 491, they were actually starting to figure out what the actual number should be and adjusting appropriately. Because from what I understand from last year, their process is that when they do figure out how much interest was earned for the entire, for all the city funds, they go through trying to figure out how much of each, how much of the pie we have and then allocate that rate of return to that piece of the pie. But during the course of the year, I think they just make estimates.
Well, it's possible, I, I don't know. I think they probably overpaid us at some point first. It's possible that they overpaid us in 2019 and that's, or they credited it twice or something. So it's just some sort of correction.
Yeah, but correct, but the one of the things, one of the things you can see is that in the far-left column, it says that it was done 1319 or something like that. So isn't that kind of like its way of saying that this was done not exactly as, you know, as a a January, February, and March number, but that it's kind of like correcting the year? Is that what 13 usually means?
Well, the 13th, that's the 13th month and our city uses that extra month to finalize the fiscal year. Because several, for whatever, you know, invoices don't come in until after, you know, we do activity in June and then the invoice comes in in July. So we need that extra month and they call it the 13th month.
Right.
So.
Where they're making adjustments.
To, they take that month to rectify everything and close out the books. Great.
What else you got?
So number eight, this is just information only. I need, we need to work, Juanita, we need you and Melissa to review the committee assignments and sign up. And so what I'll do is I'll send you the committee descriptions that are in the bylaws so that, and if you guys want to have a conversation, we certainly can, but it's time for you guys to, if there's any committees you'd like to sign up for, and by the way, it won't be too much longer, but we'll be doing the assignments anyway, right, Jeannie? That comes in February?
I don't know.
I think it's calendar year, or is it?
Everything's been so messed up because we had elections at the, at the, an odd time that we, we did move the elections to January and then committees were in February. But did you have your election this?
No. I mean, at this point in December, would be the time for us to form a nominating committee to look at officers.
I need to write that down for agenda too.
Yeah, we moved it to calendar year versus fiscal year.
Okay, so December, we need a point nominating committee on the agenda.
Right. And then, so at this point, we probably, I mean, I don't see a whole lot of committee work going on. So I guess I could back up on that and just say, we'll just wait until we have a new slate of officers and then we can look at the committees then at that point. Because I don't see, there's nothing urgent coming up on any of the committees at this point.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have. Do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
All right. If there is no other business before the Board of Trustees, then we'll call this meeting, we'll adjourn this meeting. Can, and I'm sorry, I'm brain dead. We don't need a motion to close, do we?
I'll make, I'll move.
You do, and then you just adjourn.
We have a motion, so we'll see you guys will in a month, December, all right?
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving, y'all.
November 2nd.
Yeah, time's fine.
Everybody stay safe.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, bye-bye.